Welcome back, Commissioners, and back to you, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. We are convening in the afternoon session of the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We are a bit behind schedule with regard to the posted schedule, so we have opted to reconvene here at just afternoon to go over the next topic, which is the general election report from our Elections Office. So it looks like I'm turning it over to Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board, and as you said for the record, my name is Marnie Kyle. I'm one of the ACAs, and I have the pleasure of having Assessment and Taxation where the Elections Division sits within my portfolio. We are really pleased to be here today to provide a recap of the November election and to answer questions which have been raised by members of our community. I am joined today by a group of dedicated and expert colleagues. Joe Nelson is the Director of Assessment and Taxation, Dan Forrester, the Elections Division Manager, and Jason Bush, the Deputy County Counsel, who's assigned to Elections. And I hope I got your title right.
That's correct.
Great. All three of these gentlemen value democracy and work to ensure the integrity of each and every election. Before I turn it over to the subject experts here, I just want to say thank you to the many staff, volunteers, and our community for their contributions to ensuring a fair and accurate election. You will hear today about the complex and rigorous process that is in place throughout the year in support of each election. Staff will address questions and concerns your board has heard over the past several months, and will take a moment to celebrate our accomplishments. We anticipate that you'll have several questions. We think, we hope, that it will be addressed throughout the presentation. However, please do feel free to ask questions as we're going along. So with that, I will turn it over to Dan Forrester, our Elections Division Manager.
Well, thank you, Marnie, and good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dan Forrester, Elections Division Manager at Washington County Elections. I'll start by reviewing our agenda for this presentation. The first item is a wrap-up of the November 5th, 2024 general election. Then I'm going to take some time to celebrate our Elections Team, not just our 10 permanent staff, but our many, many temporary workers that help us make successful elections happen. I'll review some election statistics from the November election, and then I'll talk about some successes that we've had in voter engagement and community outreach. I'll talk about some of the ways our community partners made the successful November 2024 election happen. And then my colleague, Deputy County Counsel Jason Bush, and I will address some of the community concerns that we've heard expressed throughout this election cycle about elections. And then Joe will conclude with some key takeaways.
Is it on? It may not be on. It is on? Okay.
So, starting out with a wrap-up of the 2024 general election, the November 5th, 2024 general election was a successful election conducted accurately and in accordance with all applicable state and federal elections laws. We certified the official results to the Secretary of State's Elections Division and to the participating districts on time and per statute. The results are available to view at the Elections Archive page on our Elections website. I want to take this opportunity to really celebrate the work of the folks who make elections happen in Washington County, permanent staff as well as temporary elections workers. Before Labor Day and well into December of 2024, election staff were living and breathing the 2024 general election. The list of items on this slide gives a sense of the many things that our permanent and temporary staff are working on during an election, often within very short timelines. The election cycle kicks off in earnest with the measure and candidate filing deadline, and this happens in early September. Staff are working hard to make sure that all of the filings are processed accurately and correctly. They review them closely so that we know what contests and what candidates should appear on the ballot. As soon as we pass the measure and candidate filing deadline, we move into the very time-sensitive work of ballot design. And because we have a number of statutory deadlines to meet, we have to start this immediately, and the staff are working over the weekend to design the ballots and get them ready for the next stage. This election, we had 171 different ballot styles, and in other elections, we could have more. We could have as many as 800 different ballot styles, but this election, we had 171. Immediately on concluding the ballot design phase, we move into proofing of the ballots, and then directly after that, we start proofing the voters' pamphlet, which goes out to all residents of Washington County. So all 171 ballot styles, as well as each page of the voters' pamphlet, must be proofed. They must be all free of errors, and to that end, they are double, triple, and quadruple-checked. As soon as we are done with proofing, we're able to send our ballots off to our printers and other, other partners, and then we start with what we call logic and accuracy testing. The logic and accuracy testing is the testing of our tabulation system that we do prior to each election to make sure that it is counting votes correctly. So we run thousands of test ballots through each of our tabulation scan systems. In this scan stations, in this election, the test deck was around 9,000 ballots. Those went through each of our scan stations, and we checked the results to make sure that they were delivering expected results. Voter registration is something that we do year-round, of course, but it really ramps up during a big election, and so we have a very large amount of this voter registration data entry work to do in a short timeframe. Our goal is to stay on top of all incoming updates from voters so that we can get those voters their ballots in as little time as possible so that they get them by Election Day and they're able to vote. So I'm very happy to say that we met this goal. During the November election cycle, just to give you a sense of the scale, we processed around 65,000 registration updates. That doesn't include almost 7,000 inactivations. In all of calendar year 2024, we processed almost 120,000 registration updates and inactivated over 21,000 records. Ballot printing and mailing is next in this list, and in this part of the process, we are working closely with our ballot printing vendor and our mailing bureau vendor, and our close collaboration with these folks is what makes it possible for us to send ballots out to voters with a minimum of delay after we receive those updates. Communication with overseas voters is happening throughout the election cycle. Military and overseas voters, sometimes called UOCAVA, you may have heard that acronym. These folks have some different options in how to mark and return their ballot, and so we have to do extra communication to make sure that they understand those options. And so several staff, several team members, our primary, their primary task is helping these voters and helping them cast their ballot, and then also helping process those ballots when they come in. Twenty days before Election Day, we mailed out ballots to all voters in Washington County, and during that 20-day window up to Election Day, it's really all hands on deck with ballot processing and signature verification. Once ballots are processed through our sorter and signatures verified, we move on to ballot opening and tabulation. The ballot opening is our largest work area. We have over 70 temporary staff working in bipartisan teams, opening ballots and preparing them for tabulation. Once the ballots are ready for tabulation, we scan them into our system, and the votes are counted. After Election Day, we move on to the last item on this list, which is the adjudication of ballots. This is the review of contest choices that are marked in a way that the tabulation system considers ambiguous, and so we have bipartisan teams that are reviewing those ballots and those contest choices to make sure that they are being counted correctly in a way that matches the voter's intent. So this is a long list, but it's not even close to being comprehensive. There's a lot of other things that go into running a successful election. In the elections world, we liken this work to running multiple marathons, one right after another, with an occasional sprint thrown in for good measure. We have a video to share with you, but we're actually going to save this until the end of the presentation due to some technical limitations. But I do want to just briefly mention that we did this video series. This was a product of our very talented communications team. They created a video series called Election Heroes. The idea was to humanize the process and to give a sense of the, you know, putting a face to our elections workers and what it's really like behind the scenes. And so we're going to see, we're going to hear Steve talk a little bit about why he is an elections worker, and I just, I just want to take a moment also to thank our communications team, Maria Gomez Martinez and Darren Aberman, who made this video as well as a number of other videos. Now, I'd like to shift gears a little bit and get into some election statistics from the November election. We accepted and processed 301,105 ballots, and because our voter registration is right now around 400,000 ballots, sorry, 400,000 registered voters, this works out to about 75%. So our actual voter turnout was 75.27% in November 2024. This was lower than our projected turnout. We were anticipating between 80 and 85% turnout, which would have put it in line with recent comparable presidential elections, like the November 2020 where we had almost 84% turnout, and then November 2016 where we had 80.2% turnout. However, Washington County was in line with the overall statewide voter turnout of 75.4%. One metric that we use when we're comparing elections is the cost per ballot and the cost per vote. The cost per ballot roughly is the total cost of the election divided by the number of registered voters in the county. And so for the November 2024 election, our cost per ballot, or another way to say it, is the cost per eligible voter was $1.89. And comparing it to the last two general elections, in November 2022, it was $1.75, and then in November 2020, it was $1.59. The other metric that we use here is the cost per ballot cast, and this is the total cost of the election divided by the number of ballots cast, so roughly 300,000 ballots. And in this election, the cost per ballot cast was $2.51. Again, looking at a couple of recent general elections, November 2022 was $2.64 per ballot cast. November 2020 was $1.89 per ballot cast. A couple of statistics for you. Increases in election costs are largely due to increased personnel costs as the minimum wage goes up, and also printing and paper costs, which continue to climb.
So basically, our cost, though, is pretty much fixed. It's not determinate on what we anticipate as voter turnout, because we had a bigger voter turnout in '20, hence why you have a bigger number to divide into the cost. Well, it's lower than that.
Exactly. So the ballot, the cost per ballot cast is going to fluctuate depending on the turnout.
Right.
And so in a low turnout election, like a special district election typically is a low voter turnout election, if you have 15% of voters turning out, you're going to have a much higher cost per ballot cast than in a general election.
Costs X amount of dollars to put on an election, regardless of how many people turn out. So, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, we, we employed over 150 temporary staff this election. And then another metric that we use sort of to gauge how busy an election was was the number of phone calls that we received in the office. And so this November election cycle, we received 8,660 phone calls through the whole election cycle, and on Election Day alone, we got 903 calls from voters. So this is just sort of a gauge of how, how busy our office was helping those voters on the phone. I want to talk about some successes that we had in voter engagement and community outreach, starting with a couple of community outreach events. I was fortunate enough to participate in a National Voter Registration Day event at Brookwood Library. This was a partnership with Virginia Garcia. There's actually some photos on this slide from that event. It was very well-attended, and I'm very happy to be part of that. I also did a presentation for city managers in the city of Sherwood for the Washington County Leadership Meeting. Our staff did a National Voter Registration Day event at Pacific University, so engaging with the community and the students out there, talking about vote by mail and registering voters. We also did a number of tours, really countless tours, of our Elections Office, one for county leadership, and a number of student groups, including one group of students that were all homeschool students that were interested in learning more about the process, as well as other members of the public, and even a couple of international elections observers that joined us from Switzerland and Norway to learn about how we do things here in Washington County. There were also a number of media interviews throughout the election cycle on a variety of topics, but a lot of the conversations were about ballot drop box security, of course. I want to talk about some of our offerings to voters, tools for voter engagement, starting with our BallotTrax messaging service, which saw increased participation in this election. So for, for those of you who don't know, I think probably you all know what BallotTrax is, but BallotTrax is our messaging service that lets voters know when a ballot has been sent out in the mail, and then when their ballot has been received and then accepted by the Elections Office, and also if there is a problem with their ballot, for example, from a signature challenge. We added 34,832 users to BallotTrax during this last election, and so currently, we are at 58,771 users, which is about 50, sorry, about 15% of our total registered voters. This is a really great service for those voters because they get that quick confirmation when their ballot has been accepted. It also takes some of the work off of us because we don't have people calling to say, "Did you get my ballot?" So it's really a win-win. We've been using BallotTrax since September of 2021. We also saw increased participation with our Votes program. Votes is a tool that is available just to our uniformed and overseas voters, the UOCAVA voters, who have different options available to them for marking and returning their ballots. So, for example, they can email the ballot. The Votes program is a tool that allows them to mark a ballot and return it to us with all the necessary paperwork using their mobile device. It's incredibly convenient for the voter, and we saw greatly increased participation this election. Of our 2,700 UOCAVA voters, 870 of them used the Votes platform to mark and return their ballot. So this is a huge jump from the last election where about 120 folks used it, but it's really catching on. We've been using Votes since May of 2021. I also want to talk about our Voter Assistance Team, which had a great election. Our Voter Assistance Team, these are folks that go out to help disabled voters in the community, so folks who need help perhaps marking a ballot or even having a ballot read to them or the voter pamphlet read to them. They work in bipartisan teams of two or three, and they will go out to assisted living centers. They'll go to people's homes or other community meeting places such as libraries. In this election, we had a total of 171 voter assistance team interactions, so this is a major jump up. Also, language assistance. Washington County Elections is committed to providing assistance in languages other than English. Our greatest demand is Spanish, and we're very fortunate to have four bilingual Spanish staff in our office to assist voters. Of course, we have access to other languages via telephone translation services, and while we didn't track every language interaction, we did serve a great number of voters on the phone and in person within Spanish. And again, when we are doing that in-person translation, it is a bipartisan team. So we will have two members, two folks who are not members of the same party assisting the voter with translation services. It's really important to spend time recognizing the many community partners that help make elections successful, and I would be negligent if I didn't put our Sheriff's Office at the top of this list. Our Washington County Sheriff's Office did great work coordinating, communicating with other law enforcement agencies to keep the elections process secure. They helped us by patrolling ballot drop site locations, especially in the wake of incidents in Clark County and Multnomah County, and then also keeping our Elections Office safe as well. Local law enforcement agencies, like Beaverton Police Department, Hillsborough Police Department, as usual, they helped us out with traffic control around our ballot drop sites, but also onsite support and security at our Elections Office. So we really are grateful to them for that support. Our facilities partners are always great team players, and we put them to work early this election, replacing a number of our older ballot drop sites, sorry, ballot drop boxes with new ballot drop boxes. And then I just want to once again recognize their very quick work on the transition from the Law Enforcement Center Dropbox to the new Public Services Building Dropbox that they made happen real in record time.
And they added signage right away as soon as it was available to help with traffic management.
Exactly.
That people found the right parking lot entrance.
Exactly. And of course, facilities is always available with quick response times for onsite support when we need it at the Elections Office. Our ITS partners also really excelled at quick response times this election. Whenever we had a tech issue that needed addressing, they understood that we were top priority, and I'm particularly grateful for ITS for being onsite at elections on Election Day just to be prepared if something should come up on that very critical day. We didn't have any tech issues, but we knew that if anything came up, we would be covered. Our public information officers are always, we're always leaning on them. I mentioned the video offerings just a moment ago. The Election Heroes video series was just one of many video projects that they worked on in 2024. These are available on our website, and I encourage you to check them out, but they're great resources for voters who want to understand the process. They also did a lot of work on social media communication, and something I really appreciate was the assistance with many media requests that we got this election. And then finally, all of the volunteers from other county departments, a lot of help from Assessment and Taxation Divisions, but also for, from many other county departments as well, helping us out on the ballot drop sites, helping run our sorter, just a number of tasks, and we just couldn't do it without the whole village. Okay, so I want to shift gears again to talk about some of the community concerns that we've heard expressed, and for this slide, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Deputy County Counsel Jason Bush.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and members of the board. In terms of switching gears to talk about the community concerns, we wanted to start out by making it clear that Washington County does listen and contemplate the issues expressed and raised by the community. We cannot talk about all the issues raised, but we have selected a few of the most common ones that have been raised and intend to talk to your board about today. As you can see here, we've identified four: vote by mail security, elections at the local level, machine tabulation, and in-person voting on Election Day. It's actually a little bit difficult to talk about these completely individually because the themes are intertwined with each other. So from one perspective, we have to talk about them as a group. And the first thing we want to mention here is that Washington County Elections strives to comply with state and federal law on these points, and that's particularly important in light of the subpoint two, elections at the local level. We have heard communities' concerns in terms of the county is a home role county, and they can follow direction as they see fit. On that point, what the Elections Department and the County Council's Office would say in regards to that is that we have clear direction from the state which preempts, meaning expressly directs or limits the county's ability to act in a certain way on specific election issues. If we look at that first subpoint, vote by mail security, there's two specific statutes directly on point on this issue. One is ORS 254-470, which is the procedures for conducting elections by mail for Oregon, and then that also segues into secondary statute 254.074, which deals with the state's requirement that counties implement security plans for elections that have to be approved by the state. So within those two points, we know that the state has clear directions that the counties are required to utilize vote by mail, and then not only are required to use and follow a very specific procedure, our security plan related to that has to be approved by the state, in which case, coming out of the fall 2024 election, we both followed the process, and our process was approved by the state. Beyond that, and this is the secondary point, we've also had a number of court cases brought against Washington County that have directly challenged the county's ability to utilize vote by mail, as well as machine tabulation in both federal and state court. The board might recall that Washington County was involved in a federal court case entitled Thielman versus Secretary of State in Washington County, which included not just Washington County, but 13 other counties. And specifically, the relief being asked for in that case was to stop the utilization of vote by mail and the utilization of machine tabulations and instead go for a hand-counting method. In that particular case, the federal court determined that the challenges brought by the plaintiff were too speculative to be considered a cognizable injury, and the federal court then in turn found that vote by mail and the utilization of tabulation machines, in this case, clear ballot as utilized by Washington County, were inappropriate methods in which to implement an election. Beyond that general broad case with the state and multiple counties, Washington County was also directly involved in another separate litigation called WRC, Mesquita versus Washington County, who challenged that first in federal court and then secondarily across the street in Washington County Circuit Court. That case, particular case, was heard in front of Judge Irwin last year, who reiterated what the federal court said, that our utilization of vote by mail and the machine tabulation system were both legitimate methods to go forward and dismiss the plaintiff's complaints. So we know then, within the direction that we've been given by the statutes, by the administrative rules implemented by the Secretary of State, and as well as the direction in federal and state court, that the utilization of vote by mail and the machine tabulation systems, utilization of the machine tabulation systems have been affirmed to date on these particular points, which really is our guiding authority here. Beyond that, there's the final point, which is related to in-person voting on Election Day. And on this particular point, the own, the additional issue that we like to raise or point we like to make is that it is always an option for voters, if they are comfortable, to come in and bring their ballot in on Election Day, even if they're not necessarily comfortable with vote by mail going forward. So on that point, I'm going to turn it back over to Dan, who's going to continue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bush. Just going on, then, we have two other items as well. So we sometimes hear concerns expressed about our voter registration rolls not being accurate or not being up to date. We've also heard concerns about deceased voters not being removed from the rolls. So I want to assure your board that Elections works year-round to keep our voter registration rolls as accurate as possible. We are relying on many sources and partnerships to update our records, including but not limited to registration updates from the voters, whether that's a paper registration card or an online update, address updates from state partners, notifications from other states and other jurisdictions, and mortality lists from many different partners, including the Secretary of State's Elections Division, the Electronic Registration Information Center, and other local government agencies. On the subject of deceased voters, it is considered a best practice to cancel deceased records when the office has a death certificate, sorry, a death certificate, a valid obituary, or a record from a trusted government agency. If we lack one of those required documents, we also have the ability to inactivate voters that we believe may be deceased, and this prevents them from receiving ballots in the future. It also initiates a correspondence which could help clarify the status of the voter. We've also heard, expressed a desire for expanded observation of election processes at Washington County Elections, specifically requests for access to the secure areas of the Elections Office to more closely observe election processes in person. So Washington County Elections is fully committed to the transparency of the elections process, and we are eager to pursue reasonable accommodations to allow observers a better understanding of the process. That said, we have to be careful to balance ballot security and security of our equipment, as well as we, we have to be very careful not to do anything that would interfere with the orderly operation of our office. Any expansion of our current observation offering would come with a cost, either in money Any expansion of our current observation offering would come with a cost either in money or staff resources or both. Some enhancements are relatively low cost and low impact, for example, adding more monitors to our observation room. But other enhancements that would require upgrades to the office footprint would consequently cost more to implement. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Nelson.
Before you turn over Dan, can I ask you a question? And I think it was one of the testimonies we heard this morning around meaningful observation. While I heard your comments about the, what it costs and what it would mean to actually do that. What is the best practice on meaningful observation?
Well, I think meaningful is probably a subjective term. I don't know if I'm qualified to answer that. I think the individual observer is going to decide what is meaningful to. I think that what you see across Oregon is there's, there's a lot of diversity in the offering. I feel pretty good about what we offer at Washington County because we do have the access to the surveillance feed. Which allows folks to see what is happening in each area as well as specific. Work in signature verification and ballot adjudication can actually stream live what the worker is doing in that moment.
Thank you.
Okay, good, good afternoon. Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners, for the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records and Elections. And I get to wrap this up with some key takeaways. First is efficient and productive. The election cycle is well managed and collaborative efforts to ensure successful operations. Once again, Washington County has proven a safe and secure election process. We have robust security measures and protocols to ensure safety and security throughout the process. Accurate results, precise processes and verification to ensure the elections accuracy and integrity. Successful election, election staff work tirelessly to ensure the community met or the county met statutory requirements and deadlines. I'd also like to recognize Dan Forster and the elections team for administering the successful election. In an operation of this magnitude and complexity, things are continuously evolving, which speaks very highly to Dan's management and leadership qualities. Secondly, I'd like to express appreciation to our community partners, many of whom are in the room today. Their detailed process review and questions serve to refine and improve the election system. Finally, I'd like to recognize you, the Washington County Board of Commissioners for your diligence in acquiring answers to questions, including onsite process tours. With a goal to ensure the highest level of election system integrity. And as Dan mentioned earlier, we had some technical constraints and we'd like to play a video.
Can I ask a question first?
Please.
Towards the point about folks monitoring the elections. And having meaningful observation, could you speak to what the state? Looks for or requires?
The Secretary of State doesn't mandate any, has no guidelines on this. Yeah.
Okay, so the Secretary of State leaves all of the observation aspects up to each of the counties. To determine independently.
Yeah, there is no guidance from the Secretary of State on this topic. It is mentioned in statute and I can't quote the whole, whole statute, but. It's, the, the sense of it is allowing observation that doesn't impede the orderly. Operations of the Elections Division.
And, and I know you meet with, you or Joe meet with state elections. Officers either across the state or of counties of large size, there are. What, at least ten of us over a population of a hundred thousand. And you've mentioned in other work sessions. And board presentations that you all compare notes and about the effectiveness of different techniques. So one thing that. I, I don't have a set question formed in my head, but I'm hoping you can speak to is. It sounds like the state requirements for observation is that there are opportunities. To observe different parts of the process. But it doesn't sound to me like there is a, any kind of guidance or requirement. For observe observers to, to see chain of custody. On any particular ballot, any specific ballot from the moment it enters. The elections office building all the way through the process. Am I correct in that? Or is there anything you want to contribute so that I, I have a better understanding of what organizationally you aim for?
You're right. Yeah, your understanding is correct. There is no requirement of chain of custody on an individual ballot or a group of ballots within the elections office.
So that leaves me with the understanding that. As you have looked at the process and we have toured it in, or at least I have with some of my colleagues in person. In advance of the November election, we, you made it clear to us the different steps. Of the ballot handling to counting and you have to the degree. Possible while weighing those costs that you've outlined, tried to ensure that the community observers. Can see the various parts of the process.
That's right. Yeah, we, we do make every effort that for folks to be able to see in real time what is happening in the elections office without. Impeding the orderly operations or impinging upon the security of the process or the machines or the ballots themselves.
Okay, thank you for me. Any other questions before we move on to the video?
I have a question. Do you want to respond?
I just had a further response to what you're talking about there. One of the balances that we really take a lot of time, we literally wrestle with this balance between. The ability to be. The observers, how we can better provide clear observation and then, and the balance with security. Literally, that's one of those things that statewide, when we go to the conferences, we have presenter after presenter talking about how to be secure. But we still want the community to be very comfortable with their ability to, to observe. And this, this is not an easy thing. We literally do wrestle with this intensely.
So it's quite an art. It's not a science.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Therese.
So thank you all. My question is for Mr. Bush, I believe here, so we'll see if you need to phone a friend. But. We have heard repeatedly in testimony that the vote by mail process is not secure. We've also heard repeatedly that we have the capability of addressing that issue through home rule. So what you have said to us today, and you've cited two court cases that. Tell us this, this board that we, we do not have the capability to, to not participate in vote by mail. And furthermore, home rule doesn't allow us to do that. Now, if I were a member of the community. And wanted to discuss the issue of vote by mail security. Would I be directed to the Secretary of State? Where, where would I go to discuss that issue?
I will say that this actually came up in the state case that we had where. Judge Irwin across the street in the Washington County Circuit Court was very clear that he thought that this was a state. Specific issue because it was directed by the state statute that we had to follow. That we had to utilize vote by mail. So to the extent that it is. A question that, a state statutory question. I do think the Secretary of State makes sense, but even beyond that, it would be a legislative question. Overturn it, overturn the state statute. You've already gone the, the other option would be to challenge that statute in state court or state or federal court. But that to date, that has not been a successful avenue for the proponents of that position. So really you would be looking at a legislative change.
So what you're really getting at is vote by mail is a matter of the state. Of that machine tabulations are also appropriately, an appropriate utilization as affirmed by the state circuit court. And that if people are looking for changes to that in Washington County or any other county. They really should be in communication with their state representatives and state senators.
That is correct, Chair.
Thank you.
Do you, I had been holding my, are you wanting us to ask all questions?
Why not ask your questions now?
Okay.
Is waiting for the video.
Okay, I will, I will do that. First question I have is, I believe you all provided responses, specific responses to some of the questions that were posed at the January seventh meeting and. I know I was one commissioner who sort of asked for that of staff. Has that been made available to the public? And if so, I don't see it connected to the agenda, so I want to make sure that. The robust number of questions that were asked can, that information can at least get.
So prior to your being sworn in, we were receiving testimony all through the fall and through election day and prior. To January, this board had asked Ms. Angie to have the elections office come in and give. The general response that is possible to the community and to the board today. And they've done the best that they can to address. The questions and comments during that time period after having fulfilled their duties related to the election and to balance our rolling agenda. But they have made an attempt to. Categorize all the different questions and come to us in an appropriate format.
I guess my question still stands. You provided written answers to these questions specifically, correct?
So to.
I mean, I saw the response, so I am asking it as a question, but I, my question is more about the distribution of that information.
What Commissioner Snyder is referring to is an interdepartmental memo that was provided to the board on January fifteenth. I don't know that that document was included in the packet. I did verify in downloading the packet right before this agenda topic that it was not included in the packet. So.
I just think this information is generally appropriate for the public in response to questions, so I would ask that that happened. That's my, my question there.
So we will ask that Clerk Moss add that communication to the packet, just of note to the board. Through any elections process, the board receives several just email updates on the election process. Questions that we've received in this case, we're talking about testimony during open comment. But we've included, you know, questions that we've received, for example, and Mr. Nelson had cited. Meeting with the city managers and special district managers. So we provide that follow-up throughout the full process directly, directly to the board and not posting those. In this case, we will post to the packet this specific communication.
Thank you. I think the people that posed the questions would appreciate that. On the topic of chain of custody, I, this isn't, it's interesting use of terminology from my perspective. I'm used to that. Language being used related to evidence in a criminal matter or something like that. I'm not sure that that type of sort of single person accountability and documentation to. The movement and handoff of every single ballot in a mail by, vote by mail system is reasonable nor necessary. And maybe this is more for the, for the legal staff here, but is that needed or appropriate? Like that level of, of documentation, like it just, it seems overly burdensome and sort of impossible to administer practically. So I want to just test that with you for a moment.
So my first thought on this is like, I do think that we get the process tied together in terms of receiving the ballots, collecting them and bringing them here. And then we open them and then they're going through a different process. And one of the underlying principles of our elections is. While we do know who votes, we're voters, the way voters vote is supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, protect.
And, and.
So inherently, the process is designed to not know how a specific person voted. And therefore, I know, and I agree with you in terms of the wording, chain of custody is actually a, a concept that's much more utilized in the law. On the criminal side for evidence, right? It doesn't completely fit exactly perfectly in the elections context. But considering that we are trying to make how people vote protected. Inherently, we have to have a way to separate people's ballots from whether or not they voted or not, right? So if we're following that evidence mentality in the law, we have to break that chain, so to speak, so that we can protect voter identity. So from that perspective, I would agree with you that by design, we don't follow every. Pattern or every specific. Process that the ballot goes through within our election system.
Can I ask a hypothetical? If there are multiple voters in the House. And I know several folks who have what they call a voting party. So they'll sit there at the table and they'll discuss certain items. Then there's the ballot and the ballot envelope. Is there a way when you, when you get the envelope, is there a way that you know this ballot? Was for this person and this envelope was for this person? Does the process ever check?
Or match on that?
Yeah. And you may not know the answer today. That's fine, too.
Yeah, there's a couple of different pieces to that. You know, as Mr. Bush outlined just a moment ago, the voter privacy is very important, so we don't want ever. We specifically don't want to ever be able to link up a specific ballot with a specific ballot. Envelope.
Okay.
So there is a point in the process, it's in the opening of the ballots, ballot return envelopes, where that, that link is broken and it's intentional.
Okay. Great. So you just know that you open up a ballot. And you look for, I mean, the signature is now on the outside, right? We don't have a privacy envelope anymore. And you have an envelope and you expect that there is a ballot inside the envelope. What happens if there's no ballot inside the envelope?
Good question. So if there is no ballot in the envelope, we're going to take that ballot envelope and set it aside. It will be rejected. Or if there is a ballot from another election or from another jurisdiction, similar, it will be taken out and not counted, obviously, because we can't count a ballot from the May election in November. Those will be.
So we're relying upon the voter to know if they put the ballot in the envelope or not.
They get a return of all the ballots.
Yep. That's, thank you for letting me.
Imagine though, the voter would get a phone call from you or something saying, hey, we got your envelope, but you didn't put a ballot in there. You follow up with that?
Yeah, so typically we are, we're noticing this at a pretty late stage, you know, it might be election day or the day after election day and so. Just logistically, we, we aren't, it's not possible for us to follow up with those voters. Early on in the election cycle, if we, if there is an error of that nature, certainly we'll, we'll reach out to the voter, but if it's happening on election day. Or obviously the day after the election day deadline.
Actually, I know a few years ago, my wife didn't sign the envelope. And she got a phone call that she voted early enough. So that she could redo.
Yeah.
But so there was good follow-up on that. I was, it was impressive to me.
So not signing a ballot return envelope, or if the signature doesn't match, those are what we call challenged ballots. And so that's a different category entirely. And so we have a process of communicating out to voters who don't sign the ballot envelope. And they actually get a three week grace period where they can resolve that challenge.
I see. Yeah, thank you.
So in the spirit of transparency, I want to ask a couple of questions or at least one general question about. The, perhaps a way to enhance the viewing possibilities without making it logistically difficult. the viewing possibilities without making it logistically difficult or even, you know, threatening the security of the election. So what would, have you guys looked at what it would take to stream every single camera in your area during elections onto the internet with a specific like camera number, date and time in a way that every single camera could be observed? There's no longer an issue or concern with the size of the observing room. It's all, you know, publicly observable all the time, thoughts on that and the cost?
I know that there are counties in Oregon that do that. I can't, can't remember exactly who's doing that right now. I haven't heard a lot of demand for that or desire, but certainly we can look into that. So we haven't, to answer your question, no, we have not looked into the cost.
And I'm, I'm looking for cheap ways to add transparency. So that seems like one that could be a possible way to do that. I would be curious to, to know about that. I appreciate you indicating that you haven't looked at it yet, it sounds like. There was also some testimony earlier today about fees being charged for reviewing election material. I think that's an area that perhaps we all, as a, for the matter of policy should, I understand we have to charge when large amounts of information are being requested and it's going to take a significant amount of staff time. I guess my question would be if we're not in that environment in the election space, there's a legitimate reason, it doesn't take a lot of staff time and it's a simple request, does that need, you know, do we need to charge a fee for that? And you don't need to answer that today, but I think that's a question that you all probably should be thinking about if you aren't. The last thing, I, I will just say this for, particularly for folks that are observing this. I was invited by Mr. Terry to attend a elections fraud concern type of event before the general election. And I attended at his request because I will pretty much meet with anyone or go to anything at least one time to listen and learn. I made a lot of notes from that. I made notes about 12 different points that if they were true, would be very concerning. And what I want to just share to close the loop on this is that I, within a month or two of that meeting, I had met with, this is actually before the commission did a tour of the space, maybe later, later in the year. I actually went and met with both of you for more than two hours and went through every single question. I asked you to demonstrate to me how you could prove each of those things either wasn't true or was true. And I just want to share that I was very pleased with the results of that and satisfied. That's all I have to say.
Well, and I will just let you know on the record that the tour that we had this fall was not our first opportunity. Nor will it be the last. So we've had board tours and board member tours of every election site frequently. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, Jason, I think you and I sat in the back row of that.
Yes, we did.
Meeting. So. I guess I've, I've kind of broken this process down into three big bites, okay? And we've heard concerns about all three of them. So the first part is the voter registration. So we take a voter, goes DMV and registers. And there's question as to do the, are they even qualified to vote? And so that whole thing has created a situation in itself of how many people do we have that have been registered that should not have been? And we've seen some statistics from DMV self admission thing of 69,000 and since in the last so many years or whatever the case is. But at any rate, there's some question as to, is that a, is that a legitimate process to register voters? And then we go to the ballot creation, which drops into your lap. And I'm impressed because I thought you said 171 this year. I, I thought before I had heard 700 in previous elections. So that is a huge amount of variables. But with that being said, then the, the chain of custody conversation starts to come into play. So we create the ballot, we send it off to a printer, the printer then sends it back, the post office comes back to the counties. And is there a checks and balance of how many ballots did you print versus how many ballots did we get? Versus, I mean, is there a, is there a control, inventory control feature in that whole process? Okay? And then, of course, the third one is the tabulation. Count, account tabulation versus a machine tabulation. So anyway, that I'm, I'm trying to figure out if I wanted to manipulate our election process, where would I do that? Where in those three steps would I, would is the weakest link? And it seems to me like voter registration would be where that is. And if that's the case, that's way outside of our purview. That's a legislative thing, am I correct in that?
Well, Washington County Elections manages all of the voter registration roles for Washington County voters. But we are working with partners, you know, and so the decision of whether we're going to work with the DMV, that's not a decision that we could make. So that, that would be, for example, a legislative call.
That's what I thought, I mean, we can't, we can't say, nope, we're not going to accept voter registrations from the DMV anymore.
That's right.
We don't have that authority, okay? All right, so am I correct in if, if I wanted to manipulate the system, is that where I would focus?
You might be getting close to.
You want to break the laws, where should you break the laws?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to think like. Yeah.
Public servants to help you learn.
Jason should know this. No, it's realizing it's a hypothetical question, but it also is if I'm going to focus my effort and energy in an election process that has integrity. Where would I focus my attention to make sure that we have that integrity?
Right, so. I think the important thing to realize is in the process, there are a lot of double checks that are built in. So when you're talking about ballot printing and inventory control and so forth, the thing that really matters in the process is that there is only one active, like physical active ballot issued to a voter at any given time. So even if they request a replacement ballot or two replacement ballots, there's only one active ballot. And so our process is set up in a way that if we receive a ballot back to our office that is not the active ballot, so it's got a unique identifier, then it's going to be set aside for further review. And it could be perfectly legitimate that we get that inactive ballot back. That could be the only ballot that that voter voted. But each voter has one active ballot available to them. And then the other piece is when we are processing that one active ballot, we're checking the signature to make sure that the person who is voting, who sent us that ballot is, is the person who should be voting. So those two checks built into the process really limit the possibilities for, you know, flooding our office with, with ballots, for example, so.
Well, I think when, in, in the chain of custody conversation of you send it off to the printer and then the printer sends it back via, via post office. And what we heard was in this particular election, there was a couple of batches that were not delivered. Couple of, a group of voters never got their ballots because they were supposed to be delivered by the post office. I don't know what happened there, but anyway, there was also a gap in that. So is, what, what things do we put into place that we say, printer, I want you to print 600,000 ballots? And they say, yep, okay. And then we get this confirmation that, yep, we printed 600,000 and we put them in the control of the USPS. And then when they are delivered to our door or wherever, that there's 600 ballots, 600,000 ballots there. So a box or two didn't disappear somewhere along the way. I mean, I'm being, being, you know, stupid about this, but it's a question of, we got 600,000 ballots out there.
171 versions of them.
Yeah.
They're not all the same.
Correct. And so what assurances do we have that we make sure that all of those ballots are delivered? And the post office does what they're supposed to do with them, like deliver them to the voters?
So one of the things that we'll do when, you know, in that, that manufacturing process, that fulfillment process is we try not to print more ballots than we need to. And so when we send a label file, address file through our printing and mailing partners, they are just printing enough ballots to fulfill that order. So they're not printing any extras at that point. And then the.
I know, but if we have 600,000 voters or whatever you said, because I.
400,000.
I was kind of doing the math a little bit, about 15% of this or whatever, but, so we have 400,000. I mean, we have 40,000 voters, we have 40,000 ballots, right?
Right.
Okay. So anyway, I'm just, that whole process to me is, I just want to make sure that we are doing what we can to control what we can control, what decisions we can make and what ones we don't make, what decisions we could make based on county decisions versus legislative decisions. I'm, I'm just trying to process all of that because we have gotten a lot of questions about things. Fortunately, they are not significant things. I mean, it's not like, where's 20,000 ballots or where's, we think 20,000 ballots, signatures were not valid? So anyway, yeah, I just, I'm just kind of babbling now, but yeah, I just want some assurance.
Well, I think a, a big piece too is, you know, just good communication with the postal service is really important. And then following up, if we do detect anything that seems like a systemic problem. So Washington County had no systemic issues with mail delivery of ballots in this election. There, there were reports of other counties that had issues, but I can't speak to that. We didn't see anything like that. If we did detect something like that, and we would from voter feedback, then we would follow with our partners at the post office. And so just, I guess keeping those communication channels open with the post office is pretty critical.
Yeah.
For something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair, for letting me do that, so.
Other commissioners, any remaining questions?
Hi, yes, Chair, and I'm, I'm Ben. And first of all, I want to say thank you for your presentation and, and more importantly, being open to feedback. I feel like you get a lot of feedback and sometimes could be addresses of criticism, but you really are open to even subjective questions and subjective things that are posed to you and to your process. So I want to commend you all for the openness and continue to listen and continue to hear us as you've been doing. So the question I have, I'm going to ask differently about the voter registration question. Say, for example, somebody registers in Washington County and accidentally marks yes to the citizenship question, would you catch that?
So the, the way the law is written is we are an attestation state. And so the voter is attesting to the truth of everything that they put on that voter registration form. And at the bottom of the form, it mentions the criminal and civil penalties if they, they make a untrue statement.
But we wouldn't catch it.
So yeah, so to answer, answer your question, it's not something that, we don't have a way of verifying that a voter who gives us a paper registration card is a citizen, there's no database that we can check.
Okay. So all 36 counties, as far as I know, are self attestation.
The whole state of Oregon.
And then the other question, this might be a bit of my own adification, but hopefully somebody else joins me in this interest. Is why the variation, that many variation of the ballot design?
So the, the reason for that is because we have a minimum of one ballot style for each of our 155 precincts in Washington County. So every election is going to have at least 155 ballot styles. And then within that, we also have other possible configurations depending on what voting districts the voter lives in.
Party registration.
And, thank you, yeah, in a primary party.
Councilors, by wards.
That's why in a primary election, we do have over 800 ballot styles because we have all of the districts configurations and then we multiply that by three.
Yeah, that's impressive that you guys can do that and not have as many and not have a lot of rejects. Yeah, congratulations.
And then I think I asked this during our tour in terms of if anybody can volunteer or to become a volunteer. And I think in your slide today, you brought forward the information around staff that are within the county that are volunteering. What security process did they go through? Are they considered like an employee because you, you mentioned 150, 10 employees? So the vol, anybody in the county can volunteers?
Yeah, just to clarify the terminology there, we have people who are Washington County employees who are volunteering to work in our division. In other words, sort of flexing their time, or if they're exempt, you know, they're just, they're not, they're just working additional hours probably. And then the, on the other side of that, we have our temporary election workers and those are all paid workers. And they go through a process through a temporary agency where they, so we, we work with a third party vendor that actually handles those employees. And if anybody is interested in being a temporary elections worker, we have a form on our website, they can fill it out, select areas of interest, and then we will contact them with potential job assignments.
And then, thank you for that answer. And my final question is also another, my own adification question. And, and also a point to raise that the presentation you shared here, the statistics slide, did not include the material posted. Because I was following the material posted here, good slide, a lot of good numbers to, that you had. So I think we should flag it for our clerk. And in that slide, I was gonna, I was wondering if there's any information you could share around in comparison, the number of calls you've got in the November you called out, but what about the primary election versus? And, and full transparency, I was one of those calls, because I made a call to your office.
I hope that you, you got.
Oh, satisfaction, more than satisfaction.
Okay, good.
110%.
I don't have those statistics here, but I can definitely provide them to you.
Commissioner Tris, do you have any comments or questions?
I asked my question earlier, thank you.
Same with me, but thank you very much for all of the communication you provide to us in advance of an election, during the whole election period as well as afterwards. We also really appreciate that you've taken the time to read all of the information that we have received, whether it's through public testimony as well as emails that the Board of Commissioners Office has received over these many months. So thank you very much for your continued excellence and striving to be the best that you can within the resources that we provide to you. Job well done.
Waiting for the movie now.
Oh, that's right, the video, thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Willie.
Yes.
If you haven't watched it already. Great, thank you very much, there were other videos, they're all quite interesting.
Okay, they're on our website.
Yep. Commissioners, we have. Commissioners, we have at least four items left on our agenda. We have establishing the Clean Water Services Audit Committee, at least an hour on the SHS discussions, board and leadership communication, and then executive session. I asked Ms. Angie about preparations for staff, whether we need to take a full hour lunch versus a half an hour lunch. What what does staff need?
Staff are comfortable with either from a staff scheduling, staff's preference is thirty minutes if you feel comfortable with thirty minutes, just due to the timing and big items you sell for the afternoon.
Yep. Board members, are you comfortable with a thirty minute lunch?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to take a thirty minute lunch and we will reconvene at one fifty two. Thank you.